The Town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our town council meeting. Tonight is Monday, October 1st, 2018. If you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, Councilwoman Ramsey will lead us.
(Inaudible) United States of America. In this republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Motion to move the police officer appointments in front of the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will be taking care of that first. I would like to ask Chief Katania if you would come to the podium and say a few words about our new, soon-to-be police officer in Plainville.
It's my pleasure to introduce to the council two excellent entry-level police candidates this evening for your consideration. Like that Joseph Semidon and Joseph Acarpio, the two Joes. Right, to my left, Joseph Semidon. Joe was born and raised in Bristol, Connecticut, and graduated Bristol Eastern High School. He's 31 years old. Joe's here with his wife and daughters and extended family. It's great to see such a nice turnout for both guys. He obtained a bachelor's degree in management and computer information systems from Post University. Joe currently works for the Town of Plainville as the computer technician where he dedicates a significant amount of time to the police department. That's how we've come to know Joe. He has distinguished himself as a knowledgeable, hard-working, dependable employee. Joe also has a passion for public service. Currently serves in the terrible fire department as a firefighter where he has earned the reputation for dependable service and tireless commitment to the cause. Joe's completed and passed our full testing process, as both candidates have. I find him to be intelligent, friendly, approachable, and I believe he'll make an excellent addition to the police department. I'm recommending Joseph Semidon might be approved for an open and funded position on the patrol force. Our next candidate is Joseph Acarpio. And Joe grew up in Weathersfield, Connecticut, where he graduated Weathersfield High. Tonight he's here with his mother, father, and siblings and extended family. And Joe is currently very close to finishing his bachelor's degree at Central Connecticut State University in criminal justice. Joe's currently our part-time civilian park patrol officer where he has developed quite a following in Norton Park. So, a couple of people, I was mentioning to the family, a couple of people have said to me, "We're gonna miss Joe." And I says, "Just give him about 38 gigs, he'll be back."[206.12][206.12](Laughter). Joe's completed and passed our full testing process for entry-level police officer. He's service-oriented, he's bright, he's friendly, and he's very approachable. I believe he will make also an excellent addition to our department. I'm also recommending Joseph Acarpio be approved tonight by the council for an open and funded position.
Great, thank you. I have these, so I'll come down and we'll do the rest of this. The two Josephs. Welcome to Plainville Police Department. I know that you will go off to your academy and do extraordinarily well, and we'll be most excited to have you back. This is such important work, not to mention the fact that it takes very special people to do this. You have to be brave and smart and be able to work with a team. So, I appreciate you stepping up to do this. Welcome to the team. Joseph, this, Joseph number one.[265.72][265.72](Laughter). This is your badge, and if you would like to ask a special person to come up and pin it for you, that would be, that would be a nice thing to do, like take some pictures.
Get your phones out.
Hi, Melissa. Congratulations to you as well. That would be his badge that you can...
Make sure the family can see for pictures.
Yeah, really. Family can see I'm on the top.
Again, we have a badge. Do you have somebody special that...
Yeah, my father.
Your dad.
Yes, thank you.
That's very nice, very nice. I think I'm not sure where that thing is, but...
I don't want to break them, but hey.
I should've had my glasses on.[336.37][336.37](Laughter). There you go. That goes the other way. They're tricky, aren't they?[348.12][348.12](Laughter). They're meant to stick, but wonderful.[352.02][352.02](Applause). Now, if you'll both please remain here, our town clerk is going to administer the oath of office for both of you.
With pleasure. Both raise your hands, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge your duties according to law as police officers for the Town of Plainville to the best of your ability, so help you God? Officer Acarpio?
Thank you.[375.28][375.28](Applause).
Thank you, and once again, thank you for continuing to provide service to the Town of Plainville. Very best of luck in your next phase of training. What?
I need to make the motion.
(Laughter). Sorry. I'm so excited to get these people and all these people are here for you. I forgot we have to vote on it.[407.12][407.12](Laughter). All right, so I need a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Motion to appoint Joseph Semidon to the position of police officer effective October 2nd, 2018. As a condition of continued employment, he must successfully complete all aspects of basic police officer training program at Connecticut Police Academy and the Plainville Police Department Field Training Program.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Motion to appoint Joseph Acarpio to the position of police officer effective October 2nd, 2018, and as a condition of continued employment, he must successfully complete all aspects of the basic police officer training program at the Connecticut Police Academy and the Plainville Police Department Field Training Program.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it's official.[475.12][475.12](Laughter).[476.12][476.12](Applause). Both of you, I'm sure you'll be wildly successful. We'll take a little break in case... Would you like to say anything?
I just want to say thank you to everybody who came out tonight to share this with me. This is really important, so, thank you very much. Thank you, guys, for putting your trust in us and doing the best job we can, so, thanks. (Applause).
Same kind of speech here. I just want to thank everyone who's been along the way and by my side to get me to the position I'm at. I also want to thank the whole police department. They've been nothing but helpful, and I appreciate you guys putting your trust in us.[521.62][521.62](Applause).
The next order of business, the public hearing. I will ask our town clerk to please read the notice of the public hearing for us.
Thank you. Notice is hereby given in accordance with the section 7-255 of the Connecticut General Statutes. The Plainville Town Council, acting as the water pollution control authority, will hold the public hearing at 7:00 p.m. on Monday, October 1st, 2018, in the council chambers in the Admissible Center, 1 Central Square, to consider the sewer user rate in period November 1st, 2018 to October 31st, 2019. Copies of the proposed rates are available at the office of the town clerk during regular business hours. Ended at Plainville, Connecticut, this 27th day of September, 2018.
Thank you. Robert, would we like to have our discussion about the sewer rate and how these were developed and the plan that the council had previously put in place? Then we'll take some comment from the public about the upcoming change to the rate.
Yes, we'll do that. As in past years, we've updated the projection. It's probably a, it's like an eight-year projection with regards to expenditures and revenues. A rate study was done several years ago by Ty &amp; Bond, and a decision was made at that time that we should, in our sewer plan, try to plan to have at least two months of expenditures available in the case of emergencies and unanticipated things that may, that may come up. And this spreadsheet details where we are anticipating expenditures will go over the next eight years. It also anticipates revenues as well, based upon the, the studies that were done, or at least the actual revenues that were received, as well as the projections that were done several years ago. And looking at that for this year, we, you know, our actual results in the current fiscal year, we ended up a little bit ahead in our revenue. You'll see that in the, in the notes, that our, our revenues for 2018 actually came up, came in about $185,000 higher than what we anticipated, and we took that into account when, when putting this forward for recommendation for years going forward. If you go out to 2026, this is what we've, what we've projected, you will see that we're anticipating that three months of expenses will be approximately $1,238,000. And, and what we do in the, in the middle of the spreadsheet is we show the fund balance that we anticipate going forward, you know, through that period of time. We're now calculating or predicting or projecting that the sewer phosphorus upgrade project will impact our debt, the sewer debt service in 2021, and that's where you'll see that a large increase to our total expenses in that particular year of approximately $1 million. You will also see for the gain and loss line item for, for fiscal years, as we anticipate that we're gonna have a gain until 2021, we're anticipating a loss of about $564,000. And that's when we begin to dig into the fund balance that has been built up over the last several years. We had, in doing this originally, we had projected, or we had, we had originally plugged in and noticed that, that the sewer user rate recommendation was 4.8%, you know, for the current fiscal year. Town staff is now adjust, or recommending an adjustment to that in a downward direction to 3.5% based upon a couple of items. One is that the revenues have come up, come in a little bit higher than when we anticipated. Number two, the actual impact to the sewer user rate for the phosphorus upgrade project is, looks like it's gonna be pushed back at least from 2020, 2021, which allows for a little bit more buildup in the, in the assigned fund balance. And based upon that, we're recommending that the, that the increase not be 4.8% this year, but actually 3.5%. We did give you a, a second sheet. I believe you distributed this sheet as well this evening, which, which would have the minimum charge go from $386.24 to $399.76, a little bit less than $14 a year, 3.5%. Well users would go up by the same amount, or, you know, or the same 3.5%. And we're also recommending that the septicage, that we charge for septicage halls to bring, to bring their pumpings down to the treatment plant also be increased by the same 3.5%. So, that's, that's pretty much the basis for tonight's recommendation. I will, I will point out that when the, when the grant loan, when the loan portion of it, we're anticipating that that, that we'll have to finance over 20 years at 2%, approximately $8.89, $8.88 million. That payment in the, in the first year would be, would be $952,000. We have to absorb $952,000 increase in 2021, as well as any increases, expenses as a result of operational costs of, of, there'll be some operational cost increases with respect to removal of phosphorus as well.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Robert about what we're doing?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Robert, obviously this is my first time looking at these type of things since being elected. Why are well users charged such a higher rate?
Well, they're not necessarily charged a higher rate, they're higher, there's a higher rate than the minimum charge, but it's not necessarily a higher rate.
So, at the minimum charge, why are well users paying more?
There's no meters. There's, there's no way to measure what they, what they're using, so... So, it doesn't seem very charged on the minimum charge, so...
So, all well users pay the same rate?
Yes.
You have an 8,000-square-foot house on well with 12 people living in it versus a 600-square-foot rent cape with two people living in it, it's the same charge?
Yes.
Gotcha. Obviously, I can't, I'm not gonna discuss the merits of that now, but maybe down the road, we can have a conversation about that.
Well, the administration involved in making it more fair is, would probably cost you more than the savings you would have, you know, from, from the town side. You know, no other thing is, is, you, you wanna do it based upon how many people are living in a house, and you have to do a survey, what happens when people move in and out on a regular basis, so...
Again, like I said, this is my first go-around with this, and I'm questioning it.
It's probably the average, what was originally said, it's been like that for quite some time. It was probably originally said on, on what the average was for, you know, all the other uses who aren't on the minimum charge, or somewhere in that range.
You know, I was on a well in Plainville for 10 years, but my ex-wife paid the bills, so I never knew for sewer usage. All I know is I didn't pay for water usage, so I watered my lawn like crazy. But, it, it just, it struck me, and I didn't know, and, like, again, I'm not trying to solve that issue tonight. I was curious about it, and, you know, that's a conversation we can have at a different time, but thank you for electing me.
We could find some historical, you know, it was done even before my time as well. I know it's not unusual, you know, to make it, you know, above the minimum charge.
Fair enough.
All set?
Yes, thank you very much.
Sure. Any other questions regarding the proposed change in the sewer user rate?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Robert, so just to be perfectly clear about the grant money, the grant that we got for this is, was just for the upgrade in the facility, had nothing to do with the increasing cost of the operations, is that correct?
That's correct. And an only, and the increase in the grant only dealt with the phosphorus portion of it. There are some elements of the upgrade that are, are not funded at the higher rate.
Okay, all right, awesome, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so, the rate that we will be, if we vote on this tonight, would be 3.5%? That's your recommendation?
That's the recommendation.
Than the 4.8 that we had originally put into the, the outlook?
Yes.
Okay.
We're hopeful that, you know, that in future years, as we refine this, that some of the increases can be, you know, we can do the same in future years and bring it down from what it was. In fact, we're projecting rather than 4.8% next year and 4.8% the year after, that would be 4.5%. That's what we're projecting. At this point in time, so it's a slight decrease, we hope that we can continue that trend as we get into those years.
As well, going out beyond what this spreadsheet does, in years 2027 through 2030, our current clean water fund debt payments come off the books. Those currently total $1.3 million a year.
Current debt service at the WFC?
Just for clean water. We have three current clean water fund grant loans out there outstanding. They expire, they come off the books entirely in 2030.
So, that means we'll see a decrease in 2027, so we'll...
Right.
Certainly, we expect that there'll be some adjustments in, you know, going forward from now as well, as we get close to that time.
Okay.
Question, is that related to like the upgrades for the nitrogen at the time? Is that what's...
The last upgrade. Last upgrade.
And that was how many years ago to begin that?
Between 2007 and 2010. They're all 20-year programs.
20 years, okay. Are there any other questions before we open the floor to public hearing? All right, at this time, I will open up the floor to, to our public hearing regarding our sewer user fee. If anybody wishes to comment, please come to that podium, state your name and address. Does anybody wish to speak to the public hearing? Anybody wish to speak to the public hearing? Joanne?
Yeah. I can get up. Joanne Edmund, 166 West Main Street. At the last town council meeting, John Kesslick made a very good suggestion regarding the sewer rate, and he said that since we've come in under cost, so to speak, is that the way it has happened? It's hard to hear. Am I right? The cost came in under?
That revenues are, were greater than anticipated.
Well, the bid came in under what was, what was anticipated, yes, that's true.
That perhaps this year, you could forego charging the taxpayer a fee, I mean, a raise in fee, because this is another tax, sewer bill's another tax, the water bill's another tax on top of tax, and you know, the taxpayer gets it right up the ying-yang. We're taxed to death. And then, another thing is, these events that you throw in this town, we get charged for part of that, too. That's, that's a subject for a little later, but I'm just thinking that, gee, take it easy on the taxpayer, give us a break, for goodness sakes. I mean, this is like millions of dollars that, that we always seem to have to come up with. Like I said, 2 million here, 2 million there, 2 million here, God, it's coming out of our ears.
Anybody else wish to speak to the public hearing? Mr. Edmund?
Well, back in 1973, when I bought my first house, my sewer, yearly sewer fee was $17, which was very, very reasonable. We've come a long way since then with, with updates in the sewer treatment plan, and I realize everything costs. But, I just wanted, I wanted to mention that that's what the fee was, $17 a year back in 1973. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak at the public hearing?
1973, I worked at the Plainville Sewerage Plant. My first job. That's about all I wanna know about it.
Thanks for the description.
Yeah.[1441.12][1441.12](Laughter). Is this, all these expenses and stuff, do they basically run as a self-contained unit? Is that like with payroll, all-in type cost? That's it, okay. And what's the inflation rate you have built into that?
We don't have an inflation rate. We're, we're anticipating that expenses will increase by 2% a year.
Okay.
That's, you know, that's even with inflation.
Okay, all right, thank you, that's it.
You're welcome. Does anybody else wish to speak to the public hearing? Anybody else? Last chance? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Thank you for your comments. Next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes of our previous meeting. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes of September 17th, 2018, special and regular meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Announcements and reports? Does anybody have anything to report tonight? Rose Mary, you always have a list.
No, I have nothing to do. I have a chair for a second.
Okay, nothing over here. I'll just make a brief report. Last Wednesday, September 26th, I attended a Plainville Community Schools Safety Forum at Plainville High School. This is a forum that...
There's so much more to it.
You can't hear. All right, sorry. I'll get closer.
Chief's going up.
Not a problem. Anyway, I did attend the safety forum at the high school, Plainville Community Schools presented. The presenters were Dr. William Pettit, who presented some opening remarks for the group, Superintendent of Schools Maureen Brummett, our Plainville Police Chief Matthew Katania, Jessica Martins, who is our new school resource officer, was there, Assistant Superintendent of Schools Steve LaPage, Plainville School Psychologist Karen Triano, and the District Director of Technology Kevin Ross. The reason the school decided to host this forum is that school security and safety of our children is a very important and ongoing topic, and it is, it is, it is very important that the Board of Education have particular programs in place to help support our students and our families with issues that come to their attention. Some of the topics that have been brought to the forefront, we obviously know all about some of the, the school tragedies that occur, so there's a, there's an effort to try and forestall some of that. Our school resource officer is a, is a new position in our town. She, Jessica Martins, Officer Martins, is at the high school. She is there to speak with students and faculty about some concerns that they have. She'll be teaching a few classes, and she is there as another set of eyes and ears on what's going on and hearing things. Sometimes students just have a way of making a comment or making, you know, some sort of a observation that may be worthwhile noting. And so, she is there for a number of different things, but she just began in September. She went through extensive training recently as a school resource officer. She did a very nice presentation. Chief Katania explained how the, the school safety program is, is an effort between the police department, the schools, the students, and the families, and how we're gonna come together to make sure everybody communicates in an effective and, and efficient manner. The conversations were very interesting. Some of them talked about school bullying. Some of them obviously entailed online cyber bullying of children, and adults go through it as well, but the schools are particularly concerned with our children. There are a number of securities put in place on the devices that the children are given to use. Oftentimes, they have, the children are given Chromebooks, which they take home to use for their schoolwork. They also use them in the school. And there are a number of safeguards that are put in place when they're in school and when they're on those devices. However, as Kevin Ross observed, children are very smart, and the older children are really way beyond, probably, we imagine, and they are, they figure out how to get around certain things and how to get into certain areas that the parents may not necessarily appreciate. So, it is really incumbent upon the parents to really be, do their due diligence when the children are at home and they're using these devices, and pay attention and watch what's going on and, and make sure you know what's happening in your child's life. The school is doing its part to, to put these things in place, but parents have to be a partnership, as, along with our police department. The school psychologist was also very interesting. She was asked if there's a greater incidence of stress and children having anxiety now than ever before, and her answer was that she doesn't think it's any greater, it's just more out in the open. And children will talk about having stress and... And children will talk about having stress and they'll talk about having anxiety, and there are probably more resources for children that need help in that regard, but certainly there will never be enough. Some children may not get the resources they need. So that's another area of concern, and Dr. Pettit actually spoke to that as well. You can come back in if you want. And it is important for not only adults that feel stress and anxiety, but children in the elementary grades can feel that as well, so it's something to pay attention to and make sure that we are taking care of our children and trying to help them as best we can. And Kevin Ross, again, as I said, he does, he did a very good job of explaining the controls that the school has put in place around the devices that the children have and that were given to them. However, the one thing they cannot control is when a child has a phone, and they are given a phone by their parent or whomever, and they're able to get on that phone and access wherever they can go. So it is an ongoing effort to make sure everybody's aware of the potential danger, and obviously, these things are used for learning, but there can be some pitfalls along the way as well. So I have to say, it was very interesting. There were a number of parents that were, that attended the program, and they stayed after and talked to some of the presenters, and I think our, our school, our community schools have some very solid policies in place to do what they can to try and get through the myriad of issues that families and children are facing in terms of security, in terms of cybersecurity. Dr. Pettit, I didn't know if you wanted to say a few words. I know that you made a few points about children and what goes on out there for them.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only comments would be that the legislature has convened a working group up at the Legislative Office Building, spearheaded by Carol Hall, who's representative from Enfield, and Brian Oller, who's from Northwest Corner, representing about nine towns. Double Purple Heart veteran from Iraq and Afghanistan, who was military police involved in the area. And Mrs. Hall became a state rep after being a Board of Education, so was very involved. But, and over the course of the year, brought in a number of experts, psychologists and police and consultants and people involved in school hardening and school safety and the like, and I think that the main points, you know, if I can summarize in forty seconds, are that the biggest issue is communication, so that they felt that safety resource officers, school resource officers, were worth their weight in gold because they improve communications among students, and that the communication between teachers and students, administration and students, and parents and students, with the students at the center was the critical issue, and the more communication there was, the less likely there was to be problems. And that, much, and I use the example, we've all gotten used to, if you see something, say something, if you think something's going on, they said, "Don't be afraid to say something." It may be a false alarm, you know? Some sixteen-year-old boy could have broken up with his girlfriend, and that may be the crux of it, or vice versa, but it may be something more serious, some serious anxiety, some serious depression, some other issue that needs to be confronted. So the consultants certainly had suggested for the legislators, the big issue was communication. And I thought one of the interesting points of it, when I talked to Representative Oller, who'd been in pretty much all the meetings through the course of the year, was that they rarely mentioned guns, that communication was a big issue. Now, obviously, school hardening, if you will, is an issue, and the Board of Education, the council, the chief and other people have worked on that, and that essentially is having appropriate cameras, and there's many cameras available on site, and the one-way in, one-way out, you know, is the major, the major factors. A number of other subtle things in terms of school hardening, but we've approached, since Columbine and later on, the later shootings, most places in the state and around the country have approached those school hardening issues, and the bigger issue appears to really be communication and care for the mental health of students. So I think that, that really was the take-home message that we got from listening to consultants over the course of the last nine months or a year or so, so thank you for the time.
Thanks for your comments. Okay, are there any other reports this evening? Not, we'll move on to appointments and reservations, and we've already done the police officer appointments. Do we have any other appointments that we need to make tonight? We're up to date so far? Okay? Thank you. All right. Our town attorney, all right, so Robert, we're at your section of the agenda, reporting to the town manager.
I have a couple of brief remarks. First one has to do with the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail Gap Closure Plan update. The State Bond Commission recently approved an appropriation of three point eight million dollars to design the Farmington Canal Trail through Plainville. This funding is part of the Let's Go CT Long Range Transportation Plan. The design will be done by the State Department of Transportation staff. It is anticipated that the design of the trail will begin in January and could last up to twenty-four months. Town staff will be participating in all stages of the design. DOT staff has also indicated that they will be working very closely with the property owners immediately impacted by the trail location for their input as well. Next item I have is the Railroad Crossing Repairs Update. The State Department of Transportation has also notified my office of their plans to have TANAM make repairs to three railroad crossings in Plainville. These crossings are located on Town Line Road, East Street, or Route Ten near Duncan Donuts, and West Main Street near the municipal center. It is estimated that it will take three days to make repairs at each location. This will necessitate road closures and detours. They are also planning to perform two of the crossing repairs on weekends. The current plan is to have this work done before Thanksgiving. There's some more planning that needs to get done, and there'll be more information to follow as we, as we learn more about their plans to improve and repair these railroad crossings on the state roads. Next item I have is fiscal year eighteen Emergency Management Performance Grant application. Each year, the State Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection provides monies under their Emergency Management Performance Grant Program to support local emergency operations centers. Plainville's EOC is located in the Police Department building. The two thousand and eighteen grant allocation for this year will be fifty cents per capita. This is the same amount as last year. Based on this per capita amount, Plainville received eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six thousand fifty cents. In order to receive the grant, the town council must first approve an authorizing resolution. The authorizing resolution is included in new business for your consideration, under new business. Scott Colby was not able to be here tonight. He had a personal issue we needed to take care of. He did leave me with a couple of happenings. One is if the town council does approve at least a user charge rate, the tax office will immediately begin to, you know, produce those, you know, those user charge bills that will go out on November first for the two thousand and nineteen sewer bills, and also, as I was reminded, that the personal property declarations are due November first for businesses in town, and they've all been mailed and been notified, but invariably, somebody doesn't get it in on time, and have to pay a penalty as a result of that, so we try to keep reminding people. The Fire Marshal's Office has a supply of ten-year battery-operated smoke alarms and carbon monoxide detectors. There's no cost to these devices. Distribution priority is given to single-family homeowners that may not be able to obtain one through other sources. If you're interested in this, obtaining one, you can contact the Fire Marshal's Office at eight six oh seven nine three zero two two one, extension two one eight, or preferred by email at Sutherland, S-U-T-H-E-R-L-A-N-D, at Plainville hyphen C-T dot gov. Also have a couple announcements from the Plainville Senior Center. They have their photo exhibit and reception at the Senior Center, which is an exhibit featuring the work of Plainville's Snappy Seniors Camera Club. It'll be on display at the Senior Center Living Room during October, and the theme is "Oh, The Places We've Been." It's a travelogue of photos that members have taken in Ireland, Cuba, Italy, Iceland, Greece, India, Hawaii, South Dakota, and our national parks. Everyone is welcome to view the exhibit during October and come to a public reception on Wednesday, October third, that's this Wednesday, from eleven AM to twelve PM, or twelve noon. They're also giving ukulele lessons at the Senior Center. There's a free demo at one o'clock on October fourth to learn how easy it can be to play the ukulele. That's an eight-week class starting October eleventh, and they're saying that no musical experience is needed, so I'm sure that will be in the northbound class. Cost of the class, the eight-week class is sixteen dollars, but you must be a Plainville resident over the age of sixty to participate. Come to the Senior Center to sign up. Couple of our albums there, but I'll skip them for another time.
Okay. Thanks very much. Does anybody have any questions for Robert with his report or some of the happenings that he's filled us in on? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, public comments section. During this portion of the meeting, we welcome residents to come to the podium. Please state your name and address. You'll be given an opportunity to speak to the council. You'll have three minutes. I will be firm on the time, because we have lately strayed away from what the three-minute time requirement is, so at two minutes and thirty seconds, I will let you know you'll have thirty seconds left. At three minutes, I'm going to tell you your time is up, and if you could please wrap up within a few seconds, not a few minutes, a few seconds. Everybody mostly has been very good about observing those time restrictions, and I certainly do appreciate it, but we are going to continue to do that. So I don't have anybody that had signed up originally, so I'll open up the floor. Does anybody wish to speak to the council? Please raise your hand, step up to the podium. No? Okay. Silly me.
Sorry to spoil your evening here. Catherine Labella, fifty Pierce Street. I oppose alignment C of the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail. I do have the following questions about the gap closure process. We learned about the federal build grant this summer. Has the contract been signed for the federal build grant?
I don't know the answer to that, Catherine. Is that part of this grant, or is this the state's?
It's a grant application. We have not heard back on the grant application, so the answer is no.
My understanding was that it needed the contract needed to be signed by September thirty-first?
No, that's not true.
That's not true? Do you have a date?
We haven't been awarded the grant, so until we get awarded the grant, I have no dates with regards to what the requirement is. We anticipate hearing back on the grant possibly in late December.
That's not what they say in their, in their information.
Who's they?
The build people, the build.
We have a grant application, and we have not heard back yet.
Okay. Let's see, I have, I think you answered some of the questions that I have. Will CRCOG be, participate in this next design phase at all?
CROG? Is that who you're talking about? The design phase is going to be, as we, the DOT staff is going to be working on the design phase, but CROG will administer the program.
No, they'll be participating in the design.
Okay.
Who will take lead? I have the name of Scott Bushy for DOT. Is he the manager for? Yes. Who will manage it from CRCOG?
I have no idea. Could be Tim.
Could be Tim. And who is going to be managing it from the town's perspective?
Myself.
Yourself? Okay, thank you. And to the council, you as our representatives and town employees have been telling us that the planning phase of this project was conceptual and preliminary. You indicated to us that you would have to see and vote on the end results of the design phase before it moves forward. Scott Bushy appears to feel otherwise. If correctly quoted in the Record Journal article, he says, "I think the route that was developed in the planning study is generally what the trail will look like. The town seems very supportive of the alignment. Do you foresee the possibility of changes in this route based on the findings in the design phase? Could that be possible?"
I have no idea what they're going to come back with, you know? They're saying that it's generally going to look like that. That's a pretty broad statement. We will certainly get to see the final design, so.
Will you plan to hold a public meeting or a referendum for Plainville residents only prior to your vote?
Not a referendum. We're gonna, I'm gonna run out on your time here. Not a referendum, that's not what's gonna happen, but I'm sure as the plans start to get more definitively defined, they will be available for the public, yeah.
But you can't tell me in what forum, though?
Well, we'll see how that, you know, develops. It's hard to say. That's, that's gonna probably be two years or so.
I anticipate there'll be an opportunity for a public, for a public hearing, perhaps more than one, but there'll be also small group meetings with particular neighborhoods, you know, so that they can focus on that particular area as opposed to trying to do the whole trail at one time as part of the design process.
But referendum is not part of the process.
No, referendum's not part of the process.
There's not gonna be a referendum for that. We will, you know, as Tom mentioned, we said, public sessions will be available.
My time's up, so I'm for it.
Okay, thank you for respecting. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Roberta?
Roberta Loria, eighteen Perron Road. I would like to begin by verse saying, "I oppose any trail or alignment that will be on, next to, or have an impact on any neighborhood in Plainville. If there are no rails available, there should be no trails. At the last town council meeting, I spoke about what I observed for twenty-eight hours on the trail in the neighboring town. No one from the trail got off to do business of any kind, and no one from establishments went on the trail. Right after I spoke, a trail user got up and said that this, to this council, that they speed on the trail and everyone else should get out of their way. She also commented that she does not get off the trail to shop. Based on my observations of twenty-eight hours and the admissions from the trail user that was here, I am once again requesting from this town council to provide statistics that you were given to show the opposite. The town of Plainville was sold a bill of goods, it's a false bill of good, pushing this trail, saying that this builds economic development. Please show me those statistics that you were given. I can handle numbers. I want to see where you got that information from. I could not see it, and trail, the trail user came up here and admitted they wanted nothing to do with that. If this is not the case, then I think a serious investigation needs to go on, because we were sold information that isn't true. People's lives are being impacted negatively because of this. That needs to be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Anybody else? Art?
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Arthur Screen, five Cornell Street. Since my time is limited, I would ask that staff refrain from answering anything during my time, wasting it. They have plenty of time during the meeting to respond where it doesn't eat into my time. Ladies and gentlemen, I don't know if you have a copy of the financial dashboard available to you that was put out for August thirty-first. I wish to raise a question about the items on page four, Major Projects Report. Under Wheeler School Project, it shows that the project budget is twenty-three million five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Revenue to date is only a hundred and nine thousand dollars, yet there are expenditures to date in excess of one million four hundred thousand. I'd like to know if any of the seven council members can explain how we're spending one point four million dollars on a project when there's only a hundred and six thousand dollars worth of revenues available to it.
Do you want me to answer?
Sure.
First of all, we don't get the revenue upfront. If we did it that way, we would be waiting a very long time. We, you know, we are allowed, once the referendum passes, to spend the money. We're authorized to spend up to that certain amount, but we don't... We're authorized to spend up to that certain amount, but we don't get reimbursed or get revenue until, in some cases, long after the project's completed, I believe. If I'm wrong, please someone correct me.
No, Mr. Zorkel, I understand that.
I'm sorry, I don't.
What I, what I don't understand from this report given by the town is you have spent $1.4 million.
As of August 31st.
But the town council has only appropriated $106,000 to the project.
I don't believe that's accurate.
That's what this document is saying.
No, no, I don't think what you just said is, I don't think it's.
That's what this document is saying. It's showing me what the current revenues are and what the current expenditures as of August 31st are.
But I don't believe the building committee has to get our approval before they spend certain money.
But the town of Plainville has to have the revenue to pay the bills that the building committee submits.
No, I don't think that's correct.
Then how did $1.4 million get spent when there's only $106,000 worth of revenues in the project account? You have not appropriated any additional funds, so where is the, where is the town staff coming up with $1.4 million to pay the bills that the building committee is submitting?
But we do have a general fund. We do temporarily borrow money.
Which, from what I understand from last month's meeting, you're just now talking about going out to bond for that money. You have spent $1.4 million already.
Yeah.
The contractors who have done that work have gotten paid.
Yeah, I don't know if they've gotten paid. I'd have to go through the building committee's notes to see if they've gotten paid.
I don't know a contractor that does work and waits a year to get paid.
Can we look into that? Wait, can we have a producer answer?
I'm sorry to lose up your time, Art. I didn't mean to go back and forth here.
This is not the only project in this document that shows that it's being spent in excess of what the revenues show.
Okay. Art, can we do some more research on that and certainly get back to you with the information?
Certainly.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that hasn't done so? Anybody else? Yes, sir. David?
I just, I get this feeling like a lot of stuff is going on behind the scenes with the trail, where a lot of agreements are being made, a lot of, I don't know, deals of some sort, where things are approved. I mean, I read that in the newspaper, too, that the people in this town generally approve of this trail, and I don't see it. I think it's just propaganda on this Mr. Bushy, whoever he is, part. Now, I think one of the selling points was that the trail is supposed to bring financial gain to the town. And, you know, I'm looking at this trail, which probably could be more described as a maze than a trail. I mean, I mean, you've got twists and turns all over the place. I mean, how much signage are you gonna need just to keep people on the trail, you know, from these turns? But it seems that it's all twisted and turned anyway. Why don't we bring it up to Whiting Street? So like, you know, people get thirsty, they can stop in Cumberland Farms, or if they're hungry, there's Big Steve's. If it's a summer day and they want a cold one, you've got the Central Cafe. We got a new pizza restaurant there, and, you know, Old El Paso, they can bring it around past the diner. So, I mean, these are the places that, I mean, if you're serious about bringing, you know, financial gain to the businesses in town, why don't we just put an extra turn in the trail and bring it up Whiting Street? Because, you know, I mean, why not? Why not? I mean, it might just take an extra sign or two to keep them taking a left and a right and back and forth. And, you know, I mean, personally, I wish we would get some input from the townspeople. I wish it could go to a referendum, just to see what people think. Even if it's not a binding referendum.
30 seconds.
Why don't we bring it to a referendum? If we can't do it in November, the next, next April when we vote on the budget. Not, it doesn't have to be binding. Let's just get a feel for what the people in this town really want instead of having, you know, people tell us and we read it in the newspaper how popular this thing is, and it might not be.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Mr. Edman?
Joel Edman, 63 Allieberry Lane. I don't think that I have stated previously that I'm not opposed to the rails-to-trails pathway through Plainville, because I'm not. It's a perfect way to utilize abandoned and obsolete railroad property, but that's not to be just yet. Instead, people have been using Plainville's well-maintained roads and sidewalks to sometimes hurriedly and sometimes, sometimes hurriedly, sometimes leisurely, get through town, which is simply just fine with me. And most everybody else that I have talked to, they made some good points. So instead of just having, well, alone, leaving them alone, the out-of-town trail designers have very expensively conjured up a trail design that weaves in and out of quiet neighborhoods, some narrow roads, some broad roads that won't be so broad, wetlands under a major highway, past the cemetery and maybe through the cemetery, and also our wonderful Norton Park. Norton Park is more than wonderful, just, just the way that it has come to be, except for the excessive noise day and night to the anguish of all of its neighbors. I'm not going to mention any of the other dastardly things that go on down there, mostly at night. So I am against also using Norton Park as a way to get through town. This whole trail gap redesign is sort of like a circus. It comes from out of town, advertising great things to happen, like for instance, the sideshow. Step right up, folks. Step right up. One thin dime, just one thin dime, the greatest sideshow that you've ever seen. Ever cadaver, elocazan, it walks, it talks, it crawls on its belly like an alligator. Well, I suppose a sideshow of a misaligned mismatch elongated by almost three miles, poorly designed needlessly by disrespecting anyone or anything in a way. I live close to Norton Park and can hear a lot of what goes on at night.
30 seconds, Mr. Edman.
Down there, when it is illegal to be there. I'm not one to complain and call the police station about people setting up explosives, jumping the fence to frolic in the pool, paint graffiti up park buildings, burn tire marks across and around ball fields and all sorts of other nasty things that nasty people do to alleviate their aggression, basically just raising hell for the idiotic fun of it.
Mr. Edman, your time is expired. Can you wrap up in a couple of seconds?
Yes. By using Norton Park as part of the trail redesign can only make matters worse down there. Therefore, I am opposed to the total redesign of the Rails-to-Trails project.
Thank you.
Thank you. No rail, no trail, and no thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Anybody else? Mr. Frangos?
Chair, before I start, may I please hand this over to the town council? I'd like to start off by saying that, no, I'm not against the trail itself, I'm just against the plan. And I was just ready to lock and load and start firing away, and it kind of confused me when you started talking about the trail by saying there's no plan that has been established. Now, if you look at the lead of this, it says Farmington Canal Heritage Trail Preferred Alignment, so there is something on the boards. Okay. Now, with that said, that's what I was building this all on. I'm just, things I've noticed, and to all due respect to all people that are against it, however, just a thought that passes Mr. Frangos's mind. If you stop and think, Plainville is a vital link to the completion of the trail, period. What makes you think you have, which makes you think it could have political or financial consequences if not approved? Farmington had put their path where they placed it, and our path ending where it ends, unless there was pre-planning already involved. Now, I stand to be corrected on that, but the die has been cast, and we're hearing about adjusting plans and doing plans, and this is pretty much set aside. Maybe an alteration here, an alteration there, but I doubt there's gonna be much of a change. On an almost comical note, driving up in the west section of the town, the bike, we're talking about one of the things that I really find ironic. You're talking about a trail that's gonna be cut through Norton Park. What's very unusual to me, that if you go to the east side of Norton Park, that is South Washington Street. That's a bike trail. If you go to the west side of Norton Park, which brackets it, the park, all right, there is a path already established. Not only is the path established, but it has the arrows and it has the little stencils and the bicycles. So we already have two bicycle paths in the Norton Park vicinity, and now we're talking about cutting through Norton Park to create another path. Now, that's kind of confusing to me, but I'm sure somebody's gonna be able to explain that one way or another. The other thing I noticed on this preferred plan, they want to narrow Broad Street. Now, how do you go about narrowing Broad Street? That's gonna be, that's just a little confusing to me because if nothing else, yeah, I think they said something about the trail in the middle.
30 seconds, Mr. Frangos.
Well, okay. Just please do me a favor, don't throw those things at that sheet away. I want you people to think about it when you start seeing the plans that the state is gonna propose to us. Please, just give me a, oh, and you did mention that as this starts to go through the planning phases, the public, the residents will be able to not necessarily participate, but be in the attendance.
Of course.
I have more to say, but I'm not gonna use up the time. Thank you.
I would not say that the public can attend DOT meetings.
Oh, well, I expect, I thought he meant if we have a public.
Well, I just want to make sure.
Oh, DOT meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Anybody else before I close? Mr. Albert?
At first, I wanted to say that the Bike Patrol, probably one of the best things you've ever done. I don't, I'm hoping that you get someone else to go there. That Joe you had there, or maybe Mr. Lee did, I don't know, but that was a great thing. And I can't tell you how many people say that they feel a lot safer with that thing going on there. Next thing with the bike trail, you need to look at Pierce Street. That plan is just not gonna do it, especially when there's a funeral. It's just not gonna happen. You barely have enough room to get one car by there. You know, and if there's a fire on that road, I don't know how a fire truck can get through there very easily. You really just need to go during a funeral, well, Mr. Nazo's been there, but it has to be redone. It just is not gonna work in the night. That was a great idea to see if you could run it downtown, but is there a process for the people to get a referendum? Like, if you vote on something, I thought, like, if you get 10% of the voters to sign up a petition, then you can force it to referendum. Is that true? Or no?
I'd have to confirm that for you.
That's not an ordinance.
It's not an ordinance?
It is an ordinance, not on something like that.
Okay. All right. So we could not do that if that happened?
That's correct.
Okay. And I want to talk about the Bloom Festival. I know John came up here and was against it, but I'm pro, I really think that that's probably one of the best things the town does, is this Bloom Festival. I reached out to Mr. Lee, and he answered a few questions I had, and again, he did it pretty promptly. It's one of his strong points, I think. Again, my main problem or question I had was on the insurance liability, and I think that, you know, from what he was saying, they never had a claim, but town is out there a little bit for, for insurance on their policies, so. The other question, I think, or more of a point, is the firemen do a great job with that, and I know one of the questions is, you know, the town is spending all this money on it, but the problem is nobody really, and I know that the fire department does a lot of scholarships, but it would be a great thing if they came up here and did a presentation and said, here's what we take in, here's what we send out, and here's the good we did for the town. That, I mean, and you probably, a lot of the badness of people thinking would just go away at that point, so maybe you can ask them.
Time is expired. Mr. Albert?
Can I ask one quick question? Norton Park, it looks like there's some work being done. Is that for the new cable stuff, or?
No, they have a problem with the electricity out there. They had to lay some new line and put a new transformer in there.
Oh, okay. All right.
There was some problems with the, with the underground utility.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Anybody else? Joanne?
Not ready. Don't start that clock. Boy, you've got a noose around our necks tonight. Whoa. So much for taxpayers, footing bills here and there and everywhere.
Starting, Joanne.
Choking us to death. Okay, start at us. All right. Joanne Edman, 166 West Main Street. I'm gonna forego the prayer, it's a shame, but, boom, right out of the chute, I'm gonna say, CHUCK, C-H-U-C-K, Alignment C for the trail. It is not good. It's ludicrous. You can't, you can't destroy people's lives and invade and intrude on them with this stupid Alignment C. I was there the day that they, they chose that Alignment C, and no matter what anybody's been saying to you, you insist upon pursuing them. And again, you don't like polling, Mr. Cox, but each one of you need to be polled on the trail. You seem to be all in favor of it, and it's, it's a very bad thing, but we're gonna continue to oppose it. Oppose it, oppose it, oppose it. Okay. Now, the quarry, I've got some things to hang out, hand out for the quarry because you seem to be not too up on it the last, at the last meeting, you seemed to be confused, four of you up there. So I've got, that I'll hand out afterwards. And, let's see, oh, let's see, let's see. Town events. You know, John Kisslick had a wonderful article in the paper this past week. He had, in several papers, and I'd like, I had. He had in several papers, and I'd like, this time business is something else. I'd like to read it because it's been in the newspapers, but maybe somebody would just...
I read it.
You read it?
I read it.
Everybody up there read it?
I read that, okay.
It's $26,000 just on the balloon festival.
We read it.
He has a message. John Kislak has a message for all of you that he wanted me to tell you tonight, and that is that expect, he's not, he's not here tonight, but expect soon...
Thirty seconds, Joanne.
...a F-O-I on the, I call it the pumpkin festival, the pumpkin festival, because that's coming. Twenty, I mean, with the sewer rate and this rate and that rate and the taxpayers, we're getting choked to death. You're choking us with the three minutes, too. Historical Center, I've got a good suggestion. This racing foul all over the place.
Time yourself.
I would, you know, the old bank, okay, wait a minute, one minute.
One second.
One second, two seconds. There's, at the end of Pier Street stands the old historic bank that nobody seems to make a go of. So I suggest that the town of Plainville, since they have so much money to spend on the schools, and so much money for this and that, and extra insurance, and so on and so forth, that they buy, please, town of Plainville should buy that bank and give it to the historical society.
Joanne, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Your time expired.
Thank you, too. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, thank you.
Anybody else have any?
Thank you for the time.
Anybody else?
Carol, speak to the council?
Has not done so? Anybody else?
So they can bone up on, they seem to be so confused on us.
With that real close public comment. I have no other business to report, so we'll be moving on to our new business section. Number one, may I have a motion?
Really nice to us.
Madam Chair? Yes. Motion for the town council acting as a water pool control authority. We only increase the sewer rate by 3.5% for the period November 1st, 2018, to October 31st, 2019.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any comment on the motion? I think we did a lot of talking about this prior to, so I guess everybody is pretty much set with that.
Just want to, you know, I express appreciation to the town staff for really giving the research and looking at the figures and knowing that we can do a little better for the taxpayers next year.
Yep, no, it's well appreciated. We understand the pressures on everybody in Plainville as well as the rest of Connecticut with financial concerns, so anything we can do to help smooth this out would be great. There are no other comments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number two, please. Madam Chair?
Yes. Motion to adopt a resolution entitled authorizing resolution of the Plainville Town Council regarding the fiscal year 2018 emergency management performance grant application.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number three?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the tax refunds is listed on the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. That takes care of our business. Mr. Lee, do you have any other items that you'd like to bring from us?
Yeah, just one other item with regards to the school building projects. The, when the referendum was passed, it was actually done in the form of an ordinance that authorized the expenditures of the $23 million. And that ordinance speaks to how the project can be financed, and it's determined by, you know, by temporary borrowings, it could be internal financing, there are various sources. So it's a reimbursement project, and we seek reimbursement generally every couple of months. The state approved it in July, you know, formally approved, you know, the grant application. There were some expenditures that were done well before July. So the report itself is, just shows the revenues that have come in to date against the project, against the expenditures, it's not intended to, you know, the financing of the project is being done by temporary borrowings and internal financing. So that revenue will increase as we get reimbursements back from the state, but it's, you know, it's the ordinance that really speaks to how the project can be financed, and it is a reimbursement project. So you have to spend the money first and then get reimbursed.
So the expenditures are temporary borrowing until we, did we finally, did we do a final borrowing for that project yet or not?
No, no, not even close to it. We just started the wheel school project, so we've, you know, so that project just shows the revenues that have come in so far against that project. But that doesn't mean that that's, you know, there's other monies that are being used to finance the expenditure side of the project. It's not supposed to be, I mean, we could put $23 million on the revenue side, but we're trying to show the exact, or the amount of monies that we received to date, you know, but we've authorized to spend $23 million. So some of that is being done by internal financing, some of it's being done by temporary borrowings. And it's the way, it's the way all school building projects have been done over the years. So maybe a little confusion about, you know, what the intent of the, what the numbers are supposed to show on the, on the actual report itself, the, you know, the dashboard. Alls it shows is the revenues that have been received so far against the project, but that doesn't mean that, you know, the project is underfunded or not being funded properly.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay. Anybody else have?
Oh, I do have one other item, sorry. During public comment, it was also speaking about there's a trail, you know, on the west side of Plainville. The sheroes in the road are not intended to delineate where a trail is. The sheroes are just to remind drivers to be careful as they drive down the road that there may be bicyclists driving, you know, on that road somewhere. It's not, it's not intended to be a trail or an official location of where bike riders should ride, so there seems to be some confusion with regards to, the sheroes are just a reminder to share the road.
There's a lot of communities that do have them painted.
Yeah, it's not an official trail, anything along those lines. We try to put them on some of our, you know, major roads to remind people that, you know, you may not be the only one on the road, and to keep your eyes open for people who are riding their bicycles, maybe riding their bicycles. It's not an official.
Yes, I just wanted to make a few comments on the trail. As you know, we did vote in February to accept the alignment, and of course, the next step was to move to the design fetish, for which we received the funding through the Let's Go Connecticut initiative. That was listed, you know, in the gap closure study as one of the potential sources of funding. If you really look at this, there really is a lot of refinement and design that does need to be done. Not everything is a done deal here. You know, the general alignment is, I mean, what it's going to look like if it's on a street, what exactly that's gonna look like. There's several options. I know from, from being involved in the process along the way, there's a number of options about how that can look, how it's gonna deal with the Route 72, getting across, under, over that, what they're going to do at the intersection of Broad and 177. So there's a lot of real design and refinement in here. Not, it isn't like, it's, you know, certainly not a complete done deal. I'm very happy to hear that there's gonna be continued opportunities for input, especially from people who may own properties near the trail. I think that's very important, and I feel very sure that that will happen. And that's all I want to say.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else want to weigh in? Okay, thank you for that. I have a number thirteen.
Madam Chair? Yes. Motion to, to executive session for a wind acquisition dispute.
Thank you, Rosemary.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We won't be taking any action, I presume, after this, Mr. Lee? Okay. Thank you.
Well, adjourned.
All right, thanks very much.